Yeah, really.
There it is.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all very much for coming. Looks like the meeting is being recorded. Uh, this is public comment portion of our meeting. So I do have a few people signed up. First up, we have Chris Hittgrave.
I'll go first.
Yeah, okay. Just make sure you introduce yourself for the record and where you're from.
Sure. So all three of us are here with the gorge downwind champs. Um, I'm on the other side of Romania and Underwood. But we've been running the gorge downwind champs now since twenty fifteen. And we moved to Stevenson uh four years ago at the fairgrounds. Anyway, we're stoked to be here. We just want to let you guys know that the event's coming up on the fourteenth of July. Um, every year now we bring thousands of people into the city of Stevenson. For anywhere between six to fifteen days, you know, most come for two weeks, some come for one week. But it's massive influx of people here and they they absolutely love it. We're stoked to be here. Chris just has some random numbers, some fun facts about the event. We'll do it quick and then uh Val runs the nap for profit that we support. So we'll just get through it quick and uh we just ultimately wanted to say hello to everybody and uh that you know, we're so stoked to be hosting our event in Stevenson.
Cool.
Yeah. So as Carter said, we we really appreciate.
Make sure you uh introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Chris Hittgrave with the gorge downwind champs. So again, as Carter said, we're really grateful to be here. Uh, this is our eleventh year for the event and over the uh over the eleven years, our best numbers suggest that we brought over eleven thousand people to the gorge. And we've had a uh economic impact of well over ten million dollars, which is absolutely incredible. Cause our event is six days long and the people generally spend a lot more than that here. So as Carter said, our event starts on July the fourteenth and runs through the nineteenth. As of this year, we have a thousand athletes registered and they'll bring probably seven hundred to a thousand family members, friends to spend uh time here and vacation around the event. Uh, it's a minimum, it's a six day event and people stay longer. So there's so just this year's event alone is likely to bring uh have an economic impact somewhere around one of one and a half million dollars to to the to the gorge itself. And we're thrilled to be able to make that happen. So we have uh people coming from twenty eight states and ten countries. And the majority of those people are all leaving here, massive fans of Stevenson, it's Romania county and what this place has to offer. So thank you for allowing us to continue to run the event here and we're thrilled to be part of this community.
Thank you for coming.
And my name is Val Stefancheck. I'm with Gorge Canoe Club. Uh, and uh Downwind Champs, I was a volunteer at Downwind Champs a few years prior. We started canoe club. I'm living in Cascade Locks just across the river. And uh we started a canoe club just after pandemic. Uh, as in addition to, you know, a lot of people come out from all over the place, but we with idea of the canoe club was to start to get people, local people out on the water. So um we've been uh doing this for five years now. We have over the summer, we do um community nights. So every Thursday night for um doesn't matter if you're Cascade Locks, Stevenson, Carson, people come from the Dallas, Portland. Uh, but we do community nights in Cascade Locks at the marina. Uh, to get people out on the water who wants to learn about the Outrigger canoe paddling and uh just being uh safe on the Columbia. Uh, it gets windy here and that's why we love it. We like the flat days.
You're new here.
For beginners, but uh the windy days are definitely the most uh exhilarating. Um, Gorge Canoe Club has been a huge benefactor from the Downwind Champs because um as one of the um one of our benefits we uh able to do, we host the beer garden for the Downwind Champs. So and all the proceeds go to the supporting canoe club. We've been able to acquire um new equipment. We've been able to um secure space. Um, we have a gym in Cascade Box that we started. Uh, where people can come and work out as members of the canoe club. And our location is uh the old Thunder Island space, if you remember uh where they used to be. So we've had that space for two years now. And uh just kind of working with the port and trying to keep it as a community center and workout space. Uh, so we appreciate Celia Stevenson for the support. And uh hopefully, I guess, we welcome everybody to come out on the water and learn to paddle with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. We hope the relationship continues well into the future.
Good. Good to do.
Thanks. All right. Thank you.
Rick Jessel Stevenson uh is part of sewer committee. I saw the comments from Dave Cox and Chad Rice and Robert Jared Dets and I thought they were very thoughtful and helpful in terms of taking a look at the numbers. It's very hard for the council to make informed decisions without a inventory of how many people are on sewer, how many people are on septic, how many people are adjacent to uh or have sewer available to them, how many vacant lots there are. Um, I took a look at vacant lots of from a city inventory. It appeared to be hundred and fifty one uh with nineteen of them three to twenty acres and five, two or three acres, but that's old information. So it's it's very hard to get a grip on this stuff without uh having all the numbers. Also, a a comprehensive loan summary in terms of the debt, I I think uh would be very helpful in terms of understanding what's going on. So I would suggest that uh you take your time and take a look at all of these numbers and do a careful analysis. Uh, I think uh that would be very helpful to you. Uh, also, the sewer committee never suggested or imply that existing great players would uh put the bill on any sewer extensions. It was always state federal grants or developers uh that were assumed to uh provide the funding. So um uh thank you for your consideration of this issue. It's been hard work for everyone over a long haul. And I think that taking a little more time would uh certainly be helpful in terms of the final product and the transparency and having more community members perhaps involved. So thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Bob?
Bob, we're talking to Celia Stevenson. I'd like to follow up with what Rick said. I like his big picture analogy. I'm just gonna give you one case study. You're probably tired of hearing about a case study, but as a reminder, I was here last month on two thousand twelve. I have it in writing from the city of Stevenson and from the county annex that if we have a functioning septic, that we will not be required to hook up to city sewer. So based on the information we had, we designed and put in our system that will now cost us fifty thousand dollars to hook up to sewer. That's in addition to the twenty thousand, the design and install of our septic system and then the ten thousand dollar decommissioning. So we're talking about eighty thousand dollars. Right? And so this affects people. That's my point here. Um, there was a couple of different talking points that were brought up. There was a roller analogy that was brought up as hey, the community has a role and everybody has to pay for it. Well, with the sewer system, uh, everybody doesn't have to pay for it. Not everybody in Stevenson is gonna have to pay for it. He brought up some really good points about funding and stuff like that. And I just want to make sure people remember that you're affecting the people um who you represent. Um, you know, and this also, I said, we have it in writing. You keep going back on your word. I thought we were gonna have a workshop today to go through the data. Personally, I'm a scientist. I do all kinds of analyses. I can help. And I know a lot of people want to help here. So when you give your words, a very important thing, trust, uh, loss of trust. You're very degraded to a community and stuff like that. So this just, you know, one of the other, I'm closing here. One of the other things we heard is this is a money grab. And to me, this feels like a used car deal, like a bad used car deal, where we're getting something, we're end up paying for something we didn't want in the first place. So thank you for your time and consideration, working through the issues with us and doing the analyses. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I'll I'll follow up there and kind of make the point that, you know, you're kind of holding up to a taxpayer on this one when you promised that the taxpayer wouldn't be held up. That there's gonna be grants, grants, uh grants and 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 involve anyone with enough property, you know, dealing with the health department should be able to put their own septic system on the property. It's a lot cheaper. I don't I don't like it that the city forces someone actually uh play ball in hooking up to the city sewer because you guys screwed up. Or someone screwed up, especially the planner, because what happens here is is that is is that you have the port down there with brewing businesses that would take up forty percent of the old sys- system. Forty percent. Whereas if the planner had any kind of relationship with the port, would have talked to the port and add and then the port could have gone for grant money to build industry out there on the port property and move and move the brewing companies out out there. And then you could have had a long range plan to actually build out the sewer system down here in in the city. But you didn't. No one, no one did. Some somebody dropped the ball and that was your planner. It's just like the fire hall property. Nobody did the fire hall property analysis. They brought they bought the property and then found out that they can't build on it. So, you know, if you want to help pay for that septic, that that sewer system, sell property. But it just, it it just, it just drives me crazy. So did anybody ever ask the residents if they wanted high density population here in the city? Ask the taxpayer, people that moved here, that's been living here for a long time? No, you guys come up with just say, hey, we're gonna get ready for high for for high density. I'm not ready for it. I didn't, I didn't move here for a for for high de- density population. And I know that 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 most people that live here didn't. They moved out to the country. That's it. Nice, peaceful, quiet. So that's all I've got to say, but I I don't think that, you know, you should have had your workshop for one thing and you and you should get the citizens involved. What I think that that you're doing by voting on this right after this meeting is over, again, you're not listening to the taxpayer. You're just you're just gonna do what you want to do and that's it. And that's and that's just, it's just not right. My money does not grow on a tree. I I keep on trying to plant that money tree. I just can't get the right tree.
You're a woodworker. Man, it grows off trees.
I work on it and work on it and work on it. My wife's a gardener. All she grows is flowers. There's no, there's no money. There's no money flower. You just can't say, hey, you know what? We screwed up and you know, and we're gonna make the taxpayers pay you for it. It's just not right. It's just not right. I didn't move here for that. And I and I and I and I and I expect to be treated treated like a, you know, an honest, hardworking taxpayer. So please, have a workshop. Discuss it with the with the people, but but don't make crazy decisions on just because, you know, hey, we screwed up and now I need some money. So hand her over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So before we go any further, there is no presumption or pressure that there is a vote. There is the opportunity, the option to vote, but there is no presumption that you will be able to vote tonight. That is entirely up to city council. So uh Ben, you said that you are ready to guide us through the refining this.
Ready to. Um, there is that item, the changes to the agenda, and this is something we tried to um build in with you guys that the city administrator proposes an agenda for action for you all. But it doesn't become the city council agenda until you clear through this portion of the agenda where you can change it. And so Pat and Dave, you both expressed frustration that the city administrator proposed that this is a meeting and not a workshop. Uh, after the mayor had said it was gonna be a workshop special meeting. That is not pressure. Like Scott said, this is the time when the city council can go through and change what's been put forward by the executives. And so this changes the agenda section is something that is possible for you. And if you don't use this to say that remove the ability to vote on it, then that's the city council saying that they're agreeing with the executive leadership.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I would like to make motion that this stays as a workshop and we do not vote on this tonight.
It's already been advertised as a special meeting, so up to count, just from a legal standpoint, you can't change the nature of what we advertise. But you have the right to do what you would ultimately do in the meeting.
But he could make a motion to change the agenda then.
But you can't change it to a workshop from a special meeting. It was advertised as a special meeting. So that's whether or not you take action is a separate issue.
But
We have to take action.
I'd like to make a motion that we strike from the agenda, the the potential vote and that we just we call it, keep it a special meeting, but that we decide right now as a council that we won't vote on this and we take away. We already have a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
We have a motion before that one on the table.
I thought that was, we were deciding that wasn't improper motion.
Yeah, I'll I'll strike my motion. Thank. And I'll second Pat's.
All right, with a person second, any discussion? Paul, there's that.
Hi. Hi. Yeah, I was always under the impression that it would be workshop too.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So on, thank you for those who sent in uh the potential changes as we discussed the last time, specific outcomes uh that we were hoping to achieve out of this, where to go through those council on changes that you had time to put in and uh give some specific ways we might alter the program that's in front of you uh or move forward in a different way if you're not comfortable after making those alterations. So um, we did that. We got that from three of you and and uh pulled that together as a full list of council suggested changes that appears on a page.
Fifty one.
Fifty one of uh sixty eight. And that's broken down into sort of the easy stuff, those things that are really minor adjustments to uh the text there that we don't see have a big impact on other components of the program that need some additional uh that would force us to put additional thought into it. Uh, then the second group is the ones that's uh largely it's the same program. Um, it's a different tool to include within this program. Uh, and then third set is uh out of scope for what we've been working on. Uh, so hoping to move through all of those. Um, we're prepared to do that using a um red light, yellow light, green light uh approach here. And so this is why now we've got the full list of what we're talking about tonight. Um, we'll move through uh quickly, explain what the potential change is. Uh, we'll look for at least three of you giving an indication one way or another. Um, whether you want to see that change made. If you do, that becomes a green light. Uh, if you don't, it becomes a red light. If you want uh pause and think about it, it'll be a yellow light until we come and circle back around. Does that sound um doable and hopefully uh get through those things?
Yes. You're gonna take them one item at a time?
So these are um the combination of everybody's uh comments that submitted on the potential changes that submitted on. Uh, there was a lot of text in there um from what Dave and Pat submitted in particular that didn't get included here as a potential change because it wasn't that specific change that you wanted to see. Um, so it was a request for different approaches or for expanding uh what we're talking about when we're talking about the sewer system, but they weren't specifically related to this um this draft that's been circulating out for nine months.
What do you mean, Ben, that it doesn't relate to it?
Um, the idea of a bond is that it doesn't come up in the draft at all. And so um talking about that bond is a distraction from this draft. It may be something when when all of you started thinking about um this regulatory program, how it relates with our sewer system and what um we're we're achieving here as a city, if the need to um understand whether the voters are gonna approve a bond is um something that prevents the the whole group or one of the things that prevents the whole group from voting on a regulatory program. So be that. But it's not, it doesn't appear in the regulatory program and so we're not talking about it. It's one of the things.
The only comment I was gonna make on that is that that the items are not mutually exclusive. You know, that the the wording and the ordinance doesn't affect how we turn around and finance it. Eventually, if we want to do uh issue a bond or refinance the debt.
Correct.
So whatever, that's something we can still do.
But you're still talking about penalties and um connection charges and so.
Yeah, those are the issues that we need to talk about.
Yeah, but they But but the bond has a direct effect on on those issues.
If we keep the penalties as as percentages of of fees as opposed to specific dollar amounts, they'll all come down if we if we refund.
Let's um, let's try to get back in the rhythm of processing through. There's there's talking about a bond. Do we want to talk about a bond tonight? Uh, yes, as a uh green light, no, as a red line.
Well, I think it it's something that
Uh, I think we should talk about it. And so I don't know that I don't want to know the thumbs and the green lights and stuff. I'm not too bright, so I'll get confused by that. But I think everything should be on the table tonight. That's my vote.
I don't see, I it's not, I not that I think the bond is a bad idea, because I don't think.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good, but it doesn't affect the ordinance.
It doesn't affect the, it's not specifically part of the ordinance and it won't.
Yeah, can I speak to that? One of the things I realized in when I was coming up with my list is that there's the nitty gritty stuff and then there's a big picture and how it fits in. And and I realize that what I think and a lot of my questions, I realized we're missing the big picture. So most of my and and I don't see how you can separate the little picture and the big picture. Like if you look just as indebtedness, and this is just an example, so we don't need to get into indebtedness or total indebtedness. Well, that relates to the numbers in the ordinance. So that's, I think, I that's all. So I don't, it's not me, you're right, it's not mutually exclusive. I mean, in other words, you can't really separate the two. That was your point. That's all. And I I think Dave's making his point in good faith and not trying to be.
I'm not trying to cut any, like, I like the the bond is in the issue. The issue was, we're gonna try and clear some of these items that we agree or disagree about the actual ordinance.
But it's easier to clear if you know where money's coming from.
We have two thumbs up. We have two thumbs down. Lucy, I haven't seen your thoughts.
Um, I guess I'm with Mike and Chuck on this one.
Okay. Okay. Good job. That's a group decision. That's democracy in action. Good job. Um, so what's um, we have, this is the collection of all three of your your comments. It's staged in those minor adjustments. Um and uh then different tools or uh out of scope identifying a different job. To stage them in that way, we do have to jump around a little bit in the text of the ordinance. If you're gonna look at it and apologize for that, but we'll just kind of go back to the front um and go through. Uh, but in that minor adjustment category, we're starting off on uh page one of the um council changes draft. It's what you had um come through in May. So um these first two, uh well, just start with on page one. Uh, in May, when you did this exercise, you agreed to strike um subsection F uh from that purpose section and um one of the suggestions you're supposed to make sure that that happens. So uh that suggestion is to retain it, um retain the removal would be a thumbs up.
So remove it.
Remove it would be thumbs up.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Okay. Uh, similar on page three, where in the May meeting, we decided to change the definition of available to exclude easements.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, and I was confused by that, Ben, because I when I looked at the available in your text here, it looks like it was still there. It says the term available in the definitions. It says uh available was, if there was a nearby easement. So I got confused by that. You know what I'm talking about? I could to go back and forth between your chart on fifty one or whatever it is and where it is in the thing is kind of difficult. But it's one of your first yellow highlight marks. And that's where I got confused because it looked like it was still in there. Do you know, what page do you do you see it, Dave?
Yeah, that's on page uh, they're on page fifty. It's where.
No, I meant where, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that they took the the easement out there, yes.
Or but we're I'm confused, maybe I'm right away, maybe I'm confused by the term right away. And maybe because I'm confusing right away with easement. So maybe I need to understand what you mean by right away.
The way I understand right away is like alongside the road.
Okay, right.
Uh, or alongside a street, whereas an easement could run through the middle of somebody's property to an adjoining property. And that was the issue that we had.
First off, easement is a right of way, right of way is an easement. They're interchangeable, right of way is dedicated. So it's all it is, is you dedicate it as portion of land for a specific use. So right of way is an easement.
So let's, I just would like to see that clarified, given that that we that we don't, somebody doesn't have a right of way and we end up doing the same. You know, you see what I'm saying?
A different word.
Yeah, so just if that could be fixed, I mean, me and the attempt is that, I mean, to fix that. You get what I'm saying? Yellow. That could be a yellow light to come up with a definition of right of way. Or one that meets with the intention of not.
Intent was to not cut.
Nice, yeah. Okay.
So maybe, yeah, we get the wording.
Public right of way.
Yeah, cause like my property has a right of way and it's set, it's set pack for that, right?
Yeah, so. So I I I'm fine with that. To after the uh yellow or um on page seven to say or public right of way. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that need to change.
Yeah. Yeah, and I
Yeah, I'd be
I think we got at least three.
Two. And we're They're fixing any status work back away. All right, um now moving into the table of when connection is required, uh but first suggestion is to um uh ensure that an individual landowner never um asked to extend the sewer system. Pat, this is a a comment from yours. Uh, and so that table would change to those commercial industrial users, multifamily users or um larger land divisions can install septic.
Yeah, the idea was that.
This this is the
So the change here would be that no individual landowner has to extend the the public sewer system.
On to, yeah.
So
You're talking about
Commercial or industrial?
The idea being that we would allow commercial or industrial.
No, we do not want that.
Okay, that's that is what this is saying, land vision resulting in two lots of more. That would be even a subdivision. Cause the intent of contractors, they be.
Yeah, this so, yeah, this suggestion is contrary to what the sewer committee has brought forward to you.
Yeah.
Um, not that you can't go against that, but they, with that committee's recommendation, these uh profit generating proposals more would have to uh extend the system. Um, Pat's was keying into another suggestion on the sewer committee saying that that they thought the city should bear the cost of extensions. And so this is where that rubber meets the road. Does the city bear the cost of all extensions or do these profit generating developments do that?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think I think. Stick what we what we've originally proposed by sewer committee, you know.
Thumbs up on this one would be that the city does all the extensions and developers don't.
Yeah, you know, doesn't part of this relate um to how far away the sewer system is for the developer? Because if it's a long ways away, most then we might be chickeners, we might be not getting development that we want. Uh it's one thing that they they gotta put in their whole infrastructure everywhere, like in Chinatown, they gotta, they gotta build it all, nobody's objecting to that, but. But so, but to me, what, I'm worried about the small mom pop and pop investor. It's got a lot, they can build three houses. And but that sewer system's a half a mile, I mean, is it is not worth it because it's so far away.
Yeah.
That's, so is there a way to. Uh to their way to ease, you know, a tier approach to this.
There were two suggestions that I made that were put in here that might help um answer that question for you or ameliorate some of this. And one of them is a part of the appeals process. Was to include the language that while in the course of the city's attempt to make appropriate provisions for its appeals process, it recognizes. That there might be unforeseen circumstances that may preclude the successful implementation of these remedies. It therefore reserves the right to enter into private contracted agreements with homeowners, you could also include businesses. Approved by the city's planning commission and codified by city council to facilitate said remedies in a more meaningful and appropriate manner. The other one was to uh relieve the burden of the, and that was on page. Also on page twelve and on page fifteen to um reduce the the. What do we say, like the marker of twenty percent fair market value down to five percent mark fair market value. As a as a remedy.
Okay.
So. I.
Both of those would help.
And only because I think if we're if we're trying to put language in here that's going to cover everybody, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah, again.
And we we need to account for special circumstances for for people that have, you know, maybe. There there there's no way to get a gravity fed system to their house, they have to install pumps and all this other stuff, it's gonna cost a. A small fortune.
Yeah.
But uh I think as a whole, we we should at least set set the precedent that if we have commercial. Entities coming into our community to develop. That they'd be required to connect if they're if the sewer is available.
Yes, and that makes sense, and the bigger the development, the more the the cost, the they can spread the costs out, it might be more profitable, but. But as we know, we don't have the huge chunks of land anymore like Chinatown and Hidden Ridge, so.
Yeah.
But. Okay.
Yeah, that's my, yeah, my question, cuz you you were saying that if we if we change that, then Chinatown, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to connect to. With Chinatown, when they start developing that whole thing, we're putting in roads, we're doing that, it isn't the developer required by our. By this ordinance to put.
They were, but if you guys change it, they wouldn't be.
We need to make sure that.
Okay, well, we need to make sure that that a developer is, the idea was to take it off the single family owner and not off the developer. So I don't know what the wording needs to be to fix that, cuz I'm not.
Or well, we just.
This was a change.
We just don't do.
Yeah, I guess the definition of developer.
Right, uh the developer is what, yeah, okay, so.
But the definition of a developer, I guess, is what I was getting into, is what about the small person, they can, but they can, hey, I can get three houses here. Uh I never thought of it, but I I'm going to, we we want that info, I didn't wanna. I'm just saying, we don't wanna have something so arduous, and you might be on the right track with what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
I just didn't want some arduous, because that's, I don't consider that person a developer, so that's why I say really gets down. They are, I mean, yeah, right. I'm kinda have a tiered approach here, I've said enough.
Anyway, I I if we had it already set up, the language is already in there that.
Right.
Someone who's doing something like Chinatown would be doing it, then I would was, that stays the same, we're taking us off of a single family.
Hmm hmm.
Person.
Yeah, I'm not.
Build my house a lot.
So so. Likes perspective then would be the thumbs down.
Understandable that one, yeah, I think we should leave that.
Those. Okay, this is a separate uh suggestion for change to the same table, um this one comes from Dave. Where he's suggesting a difference there um to. Um new developments uh. If sewer is not available for more than three lots, a developer must extend the service, so it's it's changing that's two to three.
Would, and just for a point, that would still keep you in the short plot application, right?
Yeah.
Cuz it's four or.
Okay.
I mean, so that helps, yeah, I find that.
Unrelated to short flat, because short flat is four, is. Four to five is the difference between subdivision and short class, and don't confuse yourself with that because that's jargon, that data's just shoved down our throat and we don't need to worry about that. That's just.
Right, so I mean, I guess I don't, I don't have.
So that that helped get to where I was going, I think, cuz they they can go three, and we don't have a problem. I mean, that would give me what I was wanting.
You may remember from the sewer committee, they were felt really strongly that um they wanted people to be able to do like an ADU. Yeah, so that was their.
But they're paying, right.
Yeah, they were, they were saying, if you're gonna make money on your property, then yes, you should be responsible for some sort of extension. But if you're looking to um, you know, support your family on some land, then that's where that two came from originally, so. That, just as a re- reminder.
I appreciate that.
Days gone by.
Right.
I would be willing to give a thumbs up to Dave's.
Yeah.
Suggestion.
Yeah, well, that's already three, so.
Okay.
All right, this one is a scrivener's error on page ten.
Yeah, you you still didn't fix it even in the correction.
Your suggestion, so it's almost.
And ten two pursue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just a typo.
Okay. One, two.
Okay.
All right, page ten, clarify that the SDC waiver is for single family development only, um so right now where we lay out those um. Waivers and deferrals, it applies to all development, um and the suggestion is to limit that to single family only.
Would it make more sense to say? Non-commercial? Good.
But where do you draw the line on commercials, commercials means like a business card? Cuz yes, that's a developer that shows up with quite a few lots, but when right, when they pull out the trucks, it's a residential.
Well, technically, it could be like a two family thing.
Well, if you're doing a duplex or you're doing anything that's multifamily, right.
Well, the suggestion that we had was single family, and so.
Well, what the, I know, but we can also, it is an up or down everything, cuz we could discuss it and maybe come up an agreement on it. Because what I'm, what I'm thinking is, well, just like we did the three. In other words, we wanna give people an incentive to help us build the housing we need, so could we, we just did the three. Could we say, hey, if any of those, another incentive would be if if you wanna build, then you can figure out how to do it with up to that three. Uh you have this incentive, so it's a big carrot, basically.
It kind of isn't, this is for development that would be existing at the time sewer becomes available, it's not.
Okay, thank you for cutting that, we're going.
Gotcha.
Okay, so no, yeah, I I see what you're saying.
So I guess, I guess my. My concern is where we're where we're going with this ordinance to start with. And we start talking about these quote unquote incentives and penalties and everything else. And is that where we want to go with this ordinance? And why? Why do, why do we want to penalize our citizens if we can make this a lot simpler? And I lay that out in my.
Right, I think the, no, sorry, I better make cut, cut off, I I definitely read over your uh your thoughts and um before, and then when you sent them again, I was like, oh. Look at those again today, um. But the reasoning for, I think that the different, we talked about like a stub fee, and then some of the, and they were like, well, that can be looked at as a. As a tax, we could be putting a tax, so we had to change it to a penalty, it was just the name of it was penalty, but it could be the same dollar amount. That you're talking about as a stub fee, like it's not, we we say penalty, but it has to say penalty because of the way the law, the. An ordinance has to be worded in the state of Washington. So I think that's their, some of the reasoning for some of these negative connotations on the words, they have to be worded that way to have any kind of payment. It has to be worded that way, we can't just. Say.
Charge a fee.
You can't charge a fee for something else, it has to, it has to be a penalty based on the ordinance. For the, for legal purposes, that was the reason behind making that wording, if I'm not.
You're.
If I'm wrong, I correct me, but I that was the reason we changed that, cuz we looked at a stub fee, that actually came up in multiple times during that. And that wording doesn't work in the state law, it has to be. Changed to a penalty because then that could be construed as something else. So that I I I I'm not saying, anyway, that that's my two cents on. On that part, I don't think it's coming, and we're not trying to be negative and and it just, that's the wording it has to be to be able to pass.
I think the idea is that we wanna provide as many different ways to make it as easy as possible for people to connect. Without having to provide a penalty, but I'm gonna, I've I've read this before, I'm gonna read it one more time. Only because I think it's it's relevant to the question. Um. That we're not unique in this situation, this is not the first time many communities had to deal with this situation, it's not the first time that they've had to come up with remedies. And so I'm gonna read RCW thirty five point sixty seven point one nine zero. All property owners within an area served by a such sewer system shall be compelled to connect their private drains and sewers. With such city or town system under such penalty as a legislative body is such city or town made by ordinance direct. Such penalty may in the discretion of such legislative body be an amount equal to. The charge that would otherwise be made for sewer service if the property was connected to such system. All penalties collected shall be considered revenue to the system, so. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, I mean, it's already been prescribed. And it's also part of, you know, Washington um. RCWs, and so what what we, but what we need to do is is handle this humanely. And and make make the penalties. As low as we can, make it appropriate, but the that's that's why the language is there.
Right.
Is because it's the only provision we have for getting um. Able to help contribute to the system, now, if if we wanted to say, okay, the penalty amount will be zero. Or the penalty amount is going to be a hundred and forty, but the penalty, the the language is gonna be there, one way or the other. Um, so we can talk about. What the penalty should be or shouldn't be, that's that's, I think that's an appropriate part of our discussion tonight.
I think the operative word there is the word may.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, uh exactly, could we restate what? Because we get off on some tangents, okay, what are we looking at, right, could you restate the question?
So Dave um used this as an opportunity to talk about the the overall financial program involved in the regulatory program. So the specific issue we're dealing with right now is um whether. Single family um. Whether the city would waive it or for uh system development charges for single family developments only. Or all developments uh when sewer becomes available to them, that's the specific issue.
Okay, I like the language, single family. Right, but you've changed tortures.
It's one thumbs up, two thumbs up. Three. Okay. Uh same question then, when it talks about those uh properties where sewer is currently available. It's this limited group, that group about about twenty five um developed properties that uh this ordinance would apply to. It'd only be single family residential um SDCs that'd be waived there.
Now, it it currently, it is only single family on those twenty five lots, is that correct or is that incorrect?
The ones that are currently gonna be affected, I think they're all single family, aren't they?
I haven't done that one else, so I can. We'll get them out.
Well, I don't know, I.
The question is about the word commercial.
Are any of those commercial, I guess.
Right.
Question. Well, it's anything other than single family, so it could be.
Right, that's something, it like could be, it could've been like my house is a, is multifamily.
Right.
Yeah, true.
It was built as duplex, so.
Yeah.
If sewer was already available there and I wasn't connected, then I wouldn't fall under the single family.
You would have to.
But I'd have to.
See, that, I would think that it should.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I I I agree, and I'm not.
Because otherwise, yeah.
It doesn't affect me cuz I am already on sewer, but I'm saying someone in my situation would.
But where I get confused, if you had that, the duplex.
But that's multifamily, so we would have to change it to single family and multifamily and not put in commercial. Correct.
Residential.
We could say residential and I would cover both those, okay.
Yeah, I mean, the difference between commercial real estate and residential real estate is residential is built for living purposes, commercial is for business activity.
I think change, having residential in there would be.
Appropriate.
Appropriate in my one.
So with an change, instead of being single family developments, it'd be residential developments.
That would cover.
I think that's, I think that's a.
Yeah.
Two.
Should we do that for the previous one as well then?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, yeah, what if we? Let's make sure and then get set.
Well, you know, you know.
See that.
Yeah, you say residential could be a commercial venture. If you've got, if you've got a developer putting in forty homes.
No, but if they're being individually sold for residential use, it's not a commercial development.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so we got this one, the question was whether we go back to the other one or not.
The building company is concerned.
Well, yeah.
I already made that change, you wanted to go backwards.
Okay.
Okay, and we also, we're gonna, we're not voting on this.
Yeah, this is already there, right, this is someone's living. This is someone's there and then they.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, go ahead.
Okay, um so then when it comes to the appeals um process. Uh there is a financial hardship uh suggestion that would be twenty percent of um.
Fair market.
Fair market value of the building site with sewer facilities installed or if property is already developed, five percent, twenty percent of the fair market value of the. Building and building site. And so changing those twenties to fives was the suggestion.
Yeah, I thought twenty was a bit high.
Yeah.
Especially with.
Could you explain those number, okay, just explain how that works as a person to me, give me an example.
A five hundred thousand dollar home, five percent of that would be twenty five thousand dollars. House was in excess of twenty five thousand.
I'm with you, thanks.
As opposed to the a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'm with you, yeah, okay. That makes sense.
Hate it when bad teachers in the room.
What you guys to say?
Five is.
Yeah.
We only have one other thought on that. Because I made that recommendation. Um. Would it be worth worth appraising appraised value as opposed to market value? Cuz then that, if you had market value, you're gonna require somebody to do an appraisal.
No, you just do a CMA. Market analysis, but that's all it is.
What's what's CMA?
CMA is. Just a commercial market analysis based on the property, and so a real estate agent just goes through, looks at five other sales and lies there. It's not an appraisal, it's not a. Yeah.
But on that point, I think that's important, we spell that out so that we don't have some burden, I mean, not a bunch of jargon in there, but in other words. So we don't come along and tell some poor property owner, oh, you better go out and hire appraisal. They if they just have to bring some evidence from a realtor or whatever, and that would work.
Right.
That make sense, anyway?
So you could say, based on a comparative market analysis, or you could say, but if you use the word appraisal, people are gonna go, where's your.
So we don't, we don't want people to use an appraisal, but it says fair market value right here.
Now, is that determined?
Now, is that determined?
Yeah, but you could say as fair market is determined by comparative market analysis or other tool. Cuz who knows, it's gonna happen in the next five years, it'll generate all sorts. I like that, because then you're, if they go, yeah, cuz that.
Okay.
I'm gonna go orange on this one.
You're gonna add that, add the language to it?
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta get better language in there, I also wanna look at that because when we're talking about developed lands, um. We can probably remove that first clause entirely where it's the building site, so. So I I think workshop that, you'll get a proposal uh the next time it comes to you.
Well. Ben, you don't wanna finish?
Guaranteed to be errors in that.
I'll be urgent.
You don't, you wanna just finish it off now?
But if we have time later, we can circle back to the.
Okay, circle back to the orange ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Then we can, uh, wordsmith.
Alright, next one.
Alright, next one, uh, Dave, you had a suggestion to really double down on those, um, uh. Gravity pumps.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Assume all maintenance responsibilities, so instead of. Property owners shall operate and maintain private sewage pumping facilities in a sanitary manner at all times at no expense to the city. Um, double down on that, so property owners shall assume all maintenance responsibilities, operate and maintain the private sewage pumping facility in a sanitary manner at all times.
What was the last part you said?
At no expense to the city.
At no expense to the city.
Yeah.
Two.
What, what?
You guys do realize it already says maintain and operate?
Okay, what?
When you read it, it already says operate and maintain.
So a question, a question then, what about their ability to put in a, um. A holding. System.
You got water retention.
We're getting to that, we're getting to that one as part of the, um. More tools section, so.
So we're gonna, so that would apply then for. That to this?
Different components, but. So the, the holding tank is where, uh, water and waste goes in and sits there until somebody pumps it out.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not related to this private, um. Pumping facility to get it up so it can gravity to this city system.
Two different kind, two different.
So you're saying that's a different system that you're gonna cover in a different part? Exactly, is that, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But if there was something about this pumping that you were wanting, uh, we might be able to bring it in.
No, the, the pumping part, I, I have no problem with that, with the, the owner taking care of that.
Yeah. Alright, the next one is on.
One nine oh.
Thank you.
It's, it references oh seven oh in text, the whole number comes up to the top. Okay, the next one is, um, the same, I've already given an orange dot to it because it's the same concept. As what we just addressed with, uh, the appeals, um.
Yes. And you got the five percent in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, and then there's a suggestion from, uh, both Pat and Dave, uh, to change the text of this C. Uh, to, um. Yeah, do one or the other of those, a permit for a private onsite sewage disposal system shall not become effective until, um. And then it goes on, we continue, uh, and that can either be changed to this county county health department will continue to have jurisdiction over. Onsite septic systems, or see all permitting inspection, uh, remain solely with the health department, one second. And think of this, and so those suggestions there, um, are part of what you guys were saying about not duplicating the effort of the, the health department. Which, um, is a fair point, what, um, I think you guys are missing when you say that is when. When we adopt, uh, our regulation that says who has to connect or extended connect, or who can install a septic system, those are our regulations. Those aren't the health department's regulations.
Right.
And so when somebody falls in one of those areas, the health department isn't reviewing our regulations when they're. Issuing their permits, somebody at the city is reviewing.
Okay.
So I, some of those, uh, questions come up more later about duplication of effort, um, some duplication is gonna be necessary, uh, no matter what.
But if the health department says. If the health department says it's okay for onsite septic system. Why would the city put something different?
Because when you go to that, um, chart that says that a, uh. Land division, large land division had to extend it, the health department isn't reviewing that chart, they're making that requirement, the city's making that requirement.
Yeah.
The health department determines that it can be done physically with the area that's provided.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the city reviews that it can be done in coordination with the ordinance, like the city ordinances.
With the number of residences that are placed on it?
Um, no, no, that's, that would be a physical thing as well, so the city's just. We review to see, cause they, the, the county health department doesn't know where our sewer lines are.
Right.
So they could look at, yeah, so they could say, yeah, you can, if there wasn't a place, yeah, you could put a. Septic here, you have plenty of land for it, and their perk test's out, um, but we're surrounded by sewer lines. So the city wouldn't allow them to do it even though they can, because they are, sewer is available to this property. What we're sitting on right now. So, that's the why. It's not duplicating efforts, you're just checking different boxes.
Ben, you had some suggestive wording there, you said there were two options that would clean it up on some, you thought?
You had suggested wording, you and Dave.
Yeah, okay, uh. I don't mind that, I, I like that suggestive wording, but I don't mind there be, that. In other words. I just don't want us to be in the septic business if it's not, I understand your point, and I think there's a way to have it without us. Let's say that they're not along a system, or that they don't, they don't meet any of our requirements, and say that, hey, you should hook up. Or they choose not to hook up, um, in other words, that they're following our ordinance and said, yeah, I see it's there, but I'm not gonna hook up, I'm gonna pay that penalty or whatever you call it. Then I, I just, other nap, then hey, we're not responsible for their system, they go to the health department, if they, they, they're monitoring their systems, not us.
We don't review the plans that are submitted for the septic system, we don't review perk tests, we don't review septic plans.
You're just.
We're only looking at the ordinance and where they're located.
Right.
So, so then.
Why do you think that we are, why do you think that we are doing stuff like that?
What, I guess, I guess my question, I guess my question is. Why would we? Have a landowner that. Is looking at having to quote unquote hook up to the, the sewer system, and be paying a hundred and fifty bucks a month or whatever, whatever it is. Um, versus being able to install a, um. Holding system on the property. Uh, which doesn't put anything into the ground, other than the tank, um. Why, why would the, why would the city? Feel like they need to ensure that that individual hooks up to the sewer?
So, the distribution system or the collection system and the treatment system are designed to collect and treat. All of the sewage created by development within the city limits.
I understand that.
Okay, yeah, that's not a, this, this isn't an engineering question, this is a policy question, the policy, um, that this group has, um, had drafted. And was reviewed several times and didn't come up as a change would be that if that system is available to a property owner, then they can. And so when you ask why, the question goes to the, your other four members here. Of why are you doing that, and the suggestion that you're making is that, um, no one has to connect. Or that, uh, individual property owner doesn't have to connect if that sewer system is available.
Connect, if the health, if the health department says that, but then at the time when the. System goes through.
Okay. So we are addressing your suggestion there, um. Not comprehensively, not with all of them, um, yeah, we are. We are looking at all that suggestion, uh, later on, but we can cover that, and we'll just get ahead of it, so. Right now I'm looking at the bottom of page fifty-two, uh, where there's a change to the table, uh, that would add a note, note to it. That says connection is only required if a, uh, onsite septic system holding tank is not approved. And that would apply to all types of developments, or the suggestion was that, if that can happen, then let them, uh, install septic regardless of. What type of developments or what sewers they'll.
And. I don't think I. Had that for a commercial or multifamily, did I?
New development must connect if OSS holding tank is not approved and sewer is available. And that, and then you have in parentheses, um, less than or equal to three lots. So I don't know, I don't know, um, what you're saying with that.
The way I interpret that is it's. Three lots or less, then that would apply, what Dave suggests would apply. Maybe I'm missing something. You know, in other words, then they get it approved by the county.
What do you guys want to say, do you want? Anyone to be able to put in a holding tent or a septic system regardless of whether sewer is available or not?
The whole, the whole idea was that we're, if, like. There's an empty lot across the street from, across the street from me. That sewer runs right in front of it. If someone's gonna build there, they need to connect to the, all the public utilities that are there. Like you can't do, you can't dig a well and have. And not connect the water within, you know, right there, um, like the. Sewer runs right by the house, wherever the lot, you're gonna build on that lot. Regardless of whether I could get septic in. Yeah, no, that, you just, you're connecting to the sewer, cause that's your.
Yeah, that makes.
That was.
Yeah, that makes sense, Dave, that'd be like my house, that I'm building. Up here, well, it's, sewer's been there a long time, of course I have to hook up to the sewer because I could, you know, so of course I'm. I'm gonna hook up to the sewer, cause it's on a sewer lines right there, that's what we're talking about. I don't have a problem with that, that gets, but it's interrelated because that gets more into the fees and stuff and the penalty, no, that's different, so.
That's different, yeah.
Yeah.
Don't, don't go wander off the path on, that, somebody buys a lot and there's sewer already there, we're not, we're not getting mired in the.
Alright.
It becomes available, it is available.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
And you will connect.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause no, no, no septic tanks, yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
One red to. This suggestion.
Correct.
I've got two reds.
And I, well, I guess I was unclear what Dave meant by that, so I want a clarification from Dave if I can get it, but.
So now we're going back to that understanding of when, um. The city and, uh, the health department interact, and whether or not there's a city, there's a review by the public works director.
Yeah, if they met our criteria, then I, the point I was making, if they met our criteria on the different things that we've been discussing. Then the city's out of it.
Right, I think that is the cri, I think the criteria for review by the public works director is, the review is just to go. Do they, does sewer, you know, sewer doesn't run anywhere near them, and then this Kennyford, we're not gonna say no, like, we're just like, yes, or. Uh, sewer runs right in front of this house, so.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I have no problem with that. But.
So I don't know if there's, if there's wording that.
The proposed language would remove the, any kind of review from the city on new septic systems.
I think where we get confused on this, or where I do is, though it's a review, I mean, it's different. Because are you reviewing their septic system, are you reviewing, you see what I mean, that's.
But I, yeah, I think that was, I think that was the hangup, was the, the word review in, was like, are you reviewing? Your square footage, perk test, the square, like, that, that's not what you're looking at, that's not your review.
If you're just seeing, hey, is, where is the sewer at, do they, do they qualify to have a septic system on their property, yes or no? And if they are qualified to have one, then that's the county business. That's, I mean.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, uh, yellow light on that, and then we come back and.
I think I agree with you on that, though, yeah. Alright, Ben, couple things, um, I can't see the board anymore.
Ah.
So I'm not sure if that's the spot or in that corner. Oh, okay, oh, yeah, it's right here, but. All the pretty dots, and the other thing is, if Rick's the last one. Can you come a little, do you want? Do you wanna get a little closer?
Yeah.
I, I told you to listen.
Yeah, I think what's up with this is. We're, and I'm not saying that we're on, that we have the wrong approach here, but whether or not one's happy with this, isn't each item. It's gonna be the whole package.
Yeah, but since each one of these stands in the way.
I, I, I get it, it's a chicken and the egg, and you gotta do both.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do the workshop, we need to go through all of these, come up with a, a.
I'm not objecting to that, but, but it's the whole package, some of this is easier to take, depending on the whole package, that's all I'm saying, but that decision can be.
Okay, those were the minor adjustments you edited through there, um, now we're going into selecting different tools, or that, that if you select this one. It might change something about the program that, uh, something else needs to change, too, um. So the first one of these. Are to, uh, not use the tables to explain when connection is required and, and instead use narrative text.
I mean, I don't have, I. I like tables, but.
That's actually my, my suggestion, the only thought that I had was like. In most cases, we're gonna want people, if, if sewer is available, we're gonna want them to connect, and we can probably talk about exceptions. In a narrative form a lot easier than. Putting a lot of. What, numbers and subtext, you know, explaining what the exceptions might be.
We have simplified the tables quite a bit.
Yeah, so I mean, I, it, it's fine, it doesn't. I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna get upset if it doesn't get changed.
Is easier to administer at the table.
Hmm?
It's easier to administer a table.
And to go through with person be like this one, this is you, on this third line down is you. Um, I, any, again, I, I'm not saying you have any bad ideas, but I, that, for me, I like the, I like.
Well, to me, I feel like it's micromanaging, I just want it to be clear to everybody, however that happens, I'm fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you put a thumbs down.
I'm putting a, no thumbs are up, I just want.
Okay, that's all.
I just wanna clear, and if tables make it clear, I'm happy, narrative make it clear, I'm happy.
Yeah, I think the tables are just for clarity first, so.
Okay, and then Chuck, this one was from yours too, and I just didn't understand, like, Larry, you saw it, you asked her question.
Page eleven.
Yeah.
Just the way it was worded. Limited incentive, limited incentives sewer available as of. Okay, effective day of the ordinance, the wastewater system charge will be waived or deferred. And the penalty for failure to connect will be reduced relative to developments in connection to public sewer systems made according. To table. Okay, it just, it didn't click with me the, the first couple of times I read it. So if the sewer is available according to the. The definition on the table. The incentives are in place.
If it's available on effective date of the ordinance, so this is that group of about twenty-five.
Right, this is a call, those specific.
I, there was something, something in there that made me think of it. Not being available, anyway, never mind. Okay.
So, so we're gonna do red on it, yeah. Alright, moving on to page twelve, um, this is what Chuck already described earlier, more.
Did you have, did you have one thing at the bottom, I'm sorry, there was something else on page nine.
Oh, sure.
Um, yeah, there were two different versions.
This is the pumping one.
Connection is only required if OSS holding tank is not approved. That, so.
Right, and so, um, Dave had two different suggestions, one was for all of them, and then one was for this one, um.
Connection is not required if existing buildings are too low to be served by gravity.
Yeah, that was the other one.
There are a number, uh, live on a hill, so.
Uh, all the homes going in on the downhill side in Schenadeer, they're all.
They're all.
Installing gravity, gravity, um, pumps to get to the, the public system, so it's not.
So what is being proposed here, that, that, if, and if a pump is required, then they don't have to hook up, is that what?
For existing developments specifically.
Oh, not for new development, just existing, right?
Right.
For existing developments, correct. Not, not, new development.
Okay, so if they have to pump up, then they would not be required to hook up.
For example, you take, um. Uh, John, uh.
Was he here tonight?
What's that?
That was here tonight?
No, 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 he lives down below you, anyway.
Or he doesn't have Gail?
He, no, John, um, down, down below.
Okay.
Uh, oh my gosh, what's it like, anyway, um, he would, he would have to pump up. To Robert's level.
Okay, well, Gail's telling me they have to do the same thing.
Yeah, and so, yeah, it would be really cost prohibitive for him, so, um, but to be, have the ability to. Um. Install a holding tank system as opposed to a, um. Pump station and. Have to pay all that maintenance and everything.
I would be in favor of that.
So it's not usually a pump station.
Well, it's a pump, pump system.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's a pump system.
Within the home. My mom has one too. Yeah, they're not.
Yeah.
They, yeah, usually when they're down, they're up, they'll put a holding tank in, put the pump in the bottom of a holding tank. Pump back in the line.
It's pretty. Pretty typical. But um I think one thing that you may wanna like consider, think about. Is that people do have the appeals process as well, so if it is a cost prohibitive. Doesn't matter whether it's a pump or whether it's a really long line or you still have that someplace else um. For folks that believe that that's the case for them. Um.
I was thinking the same thing. Instead of going each individual.
Think about this person, think about that person. So lean on your appeals, I would say.
Well.
Rather than thinking. Specific scenarios cuz there's no way you're gonna catch them all.
No.
Also, we're gonna get in. We're gonna relate to this as we get into whether or not we the the stub has to be there or not, so. Whenever that's related, I mean, anyway, it just.
I think I think this.
Topic hasn't come up as.
Yeah.
The um discussion this ordinance and it's not in this ordinance.
I know, but it was an idea that was mentioned before that I'd like to discuss. I mean, that we want part of this is is where.
Well, I think it's that just that's all the way down.
Yeah, yeah, I can wait till we get there.
Um. Yeah, I I kind of agree that 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 can be part of that. Could be part of the appeals process rather than carving out a specific uh. Addition to the. Policy. Trying to figure out all the scenarios. In in, I mean, I, I don't, that's, that's. That's my. Do you want it? Does that, if that makes sense, I'm not, I'm not opposed to granting that to somebody, but I'm.
So you're saying connection is not required if existing buildings are too low? That. We don't need that?
He's saying they're saying.
Saying they could have, they could, they said, no, my building and if they're.
It would be cost prohibitive.
We got the.
It would be covered by the.
Yeah. Yes, I think so.
You're saying that they would be required to hook up. It's what they're saying is.
That's what they're saying, yeah. And I don't agree with that.
Well, they could.
No, but well, just to make it clear, we're not saying that they should, that they should hook up. We're saying that they. They can get relief under the appeal process.
Don't, don't count me as one of the three on that. So you have the three options. Okay, no, I did. She's making sure because I didn't, Lucy, I don't even see what she's doing, so that's why I say. I said that.
Okay. Uh next one then is Chuck's uh suggestion about that appeal process. It's already kind of squishy saying the council can. Uh in their sole discretion, grant or deny relief upon appeal, relief includes but is not limited to exempting development from requirement to extend public sewer. Extending the period when the connection incentive is available, extending the phase in period. Uh. And reducing the penalty for failure to connect and in fact uh suggests. Um even more squishiness that's, hey, we're trying here and this appeal process may not, or the these factors may not have gotten it right. Uh there is the suggestion to bring the planning commission into it when uh negotiating agreement or contract and agreement. Uh which. I suggest you don't uh involve the planning commission in negotiating agreement. But the other language or. Then you pay. This might, even this appeal process might not be a one size fits all.
Now, the only, well, one reason I suggested that they run it by planning, first of all, was to make sure that that their their appeal was appropriate. But also, so. It required a little bit of effort on their part as opposed to just putting a proposal before city council. Cuz we aren't gonna have all the background on it. You know, but if if planning is looking at it. And saying, yeah, it makes sense that that his property sits X number of feet below the street level or whatever, that. He wouldn't be able to be gravity phased, gonna have to spend all this money. Uh to put in this system or whatever. That that there'd be a process that they go through and making that appeal. That would, that would eventually come back to city council for approval.
But aren't you just adding to the beat with that?
You're adding, you're adding, adding a layer on purpose.
Which, yeah, I don't. Yeah, I'm just saying I have problems with that. I actually have problems with the whole appeals process, so I'm not picking on you. Myself as one person.
Why don't you bring it up?
Uh. You know, I rely on four other people to help here, so I don't have to be the one bringing up every single thing I'm thinking because otherwise I'd be working full time at this and I'm not, and I'm. So. There's a lot of things I think that I've not mentioned.
You don't, you don't get paid enough for that?
Adding sentences, what what are sentences?
I have brought that up in the past. Yeah. Because in in fact, since we're talking about this as part of the field process, I mean, I'm sure you remember me saying that. That I don't. I'd rather hard stuff in there, like the five percent value of a CMA and stuff like hard facts. But to throw people at the mercy of a council and then have that be our catchall instead of having hard. Things in place that, okay, this happens and this happens and this happens. Because I mean, and I probably remember saying, I've gone to the city council before in the past and it just, it's, you're just going on a hope and a prayer. You can have people there to listen to you. You're going and begging for something. I just don't feel comfortable putting my fellow citizens through that process.
That's why I put planning as a part of it.
Well, I know, but then you're begging them too, and I don't have a lot of confidence in either body personally. Right now, I mean, forever am I really in Stevenson. So I just wouldn't send a friend of mine to the planning commission or the Steven count, see the the city council. I'm not trying to put us down. I'm just saying you're. I'd rather have. To where they don't have to do that because we have.
Stumbling on this one is the suggestion as written, and if that is red, then we can make that yellow and think about something similar. Um. To expand the the council's ability and that decision and communicate with the citizens. So. Step one would be incorporate the language uh as suggested by Chuck would be comes up, don't incorporate that um isn't yet a um red.
Actually, no. Incorporate.
You know.
There really was.
Hold on, I'm looking still. I'm trying to think about the plan. Because the planning commission does do a lot of background information and then we, like, we, we went to them with a. What was it? The the church was looking to add a.
Yeah.
Uh thing and 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 they did their, they did the research on that and then they came to us with a. With a suggestion, not. This is what you have to do. Um.
Would it not fall upon the. The owner to come with that information?
I guess in this, in these cases, I guess owner would need to come and say, hey, this is my dollar amount. This is my whatever.
These are the issues that I am dealing with.
Sure, and X, Y, Z.
Can I get an appeal?
Talk about that, yes. Uh so I I guess you're right.
That's the way I look at that. You don't need to have. That individual have to go through that in. Full situation with the planning commission, then turn around, have to come to the city council and do the same thing again.
Alright, so I'll go, I'll go with an effort. So.
I'm missing, I know.
If we took the planning mission out of it, would you?
Yeah.
Approve.
Um no. Uh the the idea of a reserve the right to enter into a private contract agreement with homeowners. Uh to facilitate. Remedies in a more meaningful and appropriate manner. I mean, isn't that, uh am I, am I missing that? The we kind of already that.
Yeah.
We can, we can already make agreements.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against any appeal process. I just don't want that to be the catchall because we've not done our work. Oh, we're just having to appeal that.
I'm still.
I'm just trying to say, if you try to account for everything, you're not gonna be able to.
Right.
I think we're.
Well, I'm not against an appeals process, but I. I just don't want it to be our catchall because it's been said a couple of times, well, you just have to appeal that.
Right, but I, I think, I think the appeal process right now is flexible enough, the way that it's worded for me.
Without having any.
Without having any additional language in there. I think that, I think it is for me. So. So.
No to any uh addition there.
That's, that's, that's.
Well, that would be so.
I got.
Alright, so did you get an appropriate vote from everybody there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I understand we're coming from Chuck, I do, I just think. We've got enough.
Okay.
In there.
Well, if if you're not gonna put that in there, then I'd almost wanna go back to what Dave's, Dave's provisions for the. The other ones that we eliminated.
What? So I'm using.
I'm willing to do that. This, this. I'd be willing to do that. But.
Because you don't think that we can, we can, we can already waive it. Like, I don't know what what other event you're looking at doing.
Well, he had two other ones. He had the uh on table thirteen point oh eight, oh seven oh dash one, right? He said uh.
Connection is not required.
Yeah, connection not required, buildings are too low to be served by gravity.
Yeah, I'm willing to revisit that.
So the the question exploring it, what um. What power do you think the council doesn't have when an appeal comes to the council that that would provide to the council?
Yeah, I don't think that's a question.
What is the question?
I think that.
They shouldn't even, they they're saying you shouldn't even have to come to council.
Yeah, I. He's saying we should go back to that.
I'm saying if you're not, if you're not, if you're not gonna put in the the paragraph that I wanted to put in there, that I'd go back and and put. Put Dave's suggestions in place.
Yeah, and I'm just saying I'm willing to do that. I think we should go back and. Look at that, given that.
Are they related?
Well, they are in that we we were saying that, look, if the, if there's a how, if.
If there's.
If there's an appeals process in this specific. Situation. Um.
We don't, we don't need these exceptions.
Need these exceptions and the, I guess I don't understand what, why, why you.
You feel, you feel the existing language would cover their ability to appeal um.
Yeah.
Their sole discretion granted.
I, I think the. You can look at it, read over the whole thing. I'm, I'm not rushing you.
Oh, no, I know, I didn't.
It doesn't have your private. Agreement.
Right.
The part it doesn't have. So.
But but wave, I mean, I guess a private agreement versus just. Saying you don't have to pay this. Is that not the same thing? What are we, what's the?
Well.
Difference.
I guess the question is, is. Are we gonna go back and discuss that? I'm saying I'm willing to. And so then, so are we discussing it is the question? Have we gone back?
I'm trying to see. Right, I'm just trying to see what, what, what that would, and I'm not, again, I'm not. Coming down on anything. I just am curious as to what. What uh adding that sentence. Would change.
That the city reserves the right to enter into private contracted agreements with the homeowners or businesses.
Okay, I mean, I, I.
There's already, when it talks about the um. Waivers, when it talks about the phase in, there's already agreements. Involved in those, and so you'd be changing the terms of those agreements or amounts of um.
It, it leaves it open for all of that.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we just.
Already?
But what I was saying is that those are create, that can already be, you can already make that no charge. So that 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 agreement would be the same.
Hmm.
Without adding the the phrase that we can enter into agreements with the, we're already entering into agreements. And we're saying we can fluctuate it to anything.
I guess my question of the council. Would be, what is a private contractor agreement that you're talking about with the homeowner?
Well, you've got one homeowner in the city entering into an agreement. With. With each other, I mean, with the city and the and the one homeowner as opposed to falling under prescribed. Um table.
Right, which is the exception. If somebody brings an appeal, there, there are, that's already the, and there.
Well, but the appeal, the appeals process is pretty prescriptive too, doesn't it?
No, no, that's one clarification too. Factors the council may consider included but are not limited to. You don't have to consider any of those. You can say, hey, cousin, you don't have to pay.
Okay.
So long as you're not arbitrary. You can't treat one citizen different. Then you treat another one. So if you do make a ruling and a decision on something that's gonna become res judicata for the next homeowner that pops up.
Okay, so it is a little more complicated than what what Jeff said based on what you said. I guess the what, the reason I kept saying. I mean, do you wanna go back and review the vote on that one thing? Or because I I'm willing to if you are.
It, it.
I mean, you shouldn't have to justify your reason.
This one? You finish this one and it causes to go back, we can go back.
Well, he was the one that suggested it, not me.
This one.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, I.
Well, you already got a vote on it anyway, didn't you?
But no, but you're saying you might change your vote. That's why I'm wanting to go back.
Whether to include the planning commission, right now we're, we're doing the word smoothing. We're in the yellow area to see if we want to include anything related to that. Um.
We already voted.
I think everybody voted to not to put any of it in.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you.
We voted so.
I didn't vote it for it, but. But other people did.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't, I think we all, most of us agree that acting with planning commission was right. And I think that, I guess in my, in my view. Of what the appeals process is already.
Yeah.
It open, it's open to what you're saying.
But clarify, planning commission or the whole site or the whole paragraph?
No, just your not planning commission. I'm saying the uh reserves the right to. Enter into private contract agreement with homeowners. That's the sentence that I'm like, we, we already.
So the whole paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's already. Hope, like the appeals process, we already. It's not gonna give us more flexibility. We already have that flexibility.
I think where I'm getting confused if, is I think we should. If if he wants us to go back and look at that thing, we should. So are we doing that?
Not yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay, okay, that's where I'm getting confused.
I would, I would say that. From everything I'm hearing. Everything in the original paragraph. Covers. What?
What's in the second?
What's in the second?
Right, that's what, that's what.
That's the way I'm.
That's why I heard David and I're saying the same, yeah. That's why I'm seeing it. So I don't see any reason to revisit.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, I see three thumbs down there. Now that that.
You accept that?
Talked more about it. I want to return it all to the table to see if additional caveats can be built into the table.
And I think.
That's what you want.
Did you wanna go back and and look at, look at what David, yeah, his suggestions then? At that point?
He hasn't, doesn't the line. Includes but is not limited to, doesn't that? It just feels. You start putting specific scenarios, then someone's gonna go, what, okay, I don't see it on here, so where does that leave me?
Yeah. Okay. If if you make the argument that everything that they need to have. Is prescribed in that first paragraph as a remedy, then we probably don't need to make any allowances for anything else. Is that what you're saying?
Okay, so not going back and revisiting. Okay. You would have been listening, right, and he fucks that, so. Alright, um. This is the um. Key into regulating.
Robert, can I close your computer so I can see better? Thank you.
Sure.
No, we're listening.
Page eight uh zero six zero. Uh this one is from Chuck, questions uh the legal mechanism that allows us to prohibit uh septic systems.
Did we do page six? Did we do page six onsite sewage system?
Put a red dot on the wrong spot. I'm not sure where it's supposed to put that. Oh, okay. Nope, good catch. Okay, so this suggestion is to clarify that holding tanks are somehow different. Uh, than what the county regulates when they regulate onsite sewage systems, and therefore we should regulate them uh differently. And that's why I add it here, because we haven't discussed how those regulations might differ from what the county does. Um, I view this as. Going against what we talked about up here of duplicating effort that we are intentionally, we would intentionally be duplicating effort if we were to start regulating that type of system differently.
So it's gotta be camp, basically, we're just letting the county approve whether or not it's considered an onsite septic?
They've got a a whole set of rules that they go by that include, that have all contingencies for a holding tank or a septic with. The leach fields, um, whatever other versions are out there that we don't break.
Who recommended that? What was the rationale? So I know where the basis?
This is what Dave's mentioned a number of times about a holding tank, and he wants, wants us to be able to. Allow holding tanks um in places where, I believe this is it, allow holding tanks in places where we wouldn't allow an onsite septic system. So that bishop sanitation or your bumper of choice could back up every couple of weeks, throw a um.
Do we know what the county's position is on that? What the county, the county rules allow? I mean, what where they're at, so.
Definition that we use and that we copied here is from the Washington Administrative Code, and the county administrators, the Washington Administrative Code. When they uh review onsite septic systems, they use the definition that's drafted, not the, not the proposed change. And so, once you get into that, I haven't um gone deep into the Washington Administrative Codes to know how they differ. Uh, in uh the. Review and approval of holding tanks versus uh leach field, I would assume that they would have a pumping schedule that they would have to adhere to. That would be different from a leach field, and so and so, once every three years or whatever it is, something like that would be. Uh, based on some engineering analysis of, well, reaching that, so it's not over topping.
Dave, does this cover what you think? Because I'm, is what I'm thinking of, if it's legal for them to put a holding tank, a- as opposed to. That system, I mean, a septic system, and it's legal, and if the city weren't around and the the county would approve it. Then I'd say that, then that's permissible if, because they're meeting all their other, there isn't a system, I mean. They have the other checklist throughout our ordinance they have to go by, the same as septic. Um, that it, why would we care? You know? Um, so if it's legal to do, they should be allowed to have it.
Um, it's, it's back to that same fundamental where connection is required or not required.
Right.
And so Chuck's neighborhood is all on sewer, um affluent neighborhood, it's whether you think. Chuck's neighborhood, and it's not whether you think, it's whether you wanna engage Chuck's neighborhood to see if they want uh.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Holding tank and somebody's.
I get what you're saying, and that's why I prefaced it, as long as they're meeting the conditions of. Any other conditions we have in the ordinance, which is you have a line right there, and so you have their cup that you can't do a holding tank instead, right?
Which is, yeah, part of the provisions of uh chapter one.
Not the suggestion, but the suggestion is that they could, but why? Or that we were, would be somehow more permissible for that.
If if the, if the line was not available. Or if the line was available.
If the line's not available, then they can uh install whatever type of system is permissible.
Including with, including a holding tank, if it's permissible.
Yeah, as drafted, as drafted, they could do that, based on the change. It becomes this gray area that requires more, that's out of scope for this effort, because we haven't just. Described why that's different and what's different about it than than maybe.
I I guess my question. On the first, on the first part of that is it said, it includes the the verbiage. An onsite sewage system also refers to a holding tank sewage system, yada, yada, yada. Why is that in there?
We copied that definition from Washington Administrative Code.
Okay.
Deals with onsite septic systems, and you found the reason to put that in there, and I didn't question that.
And so I would say, and that is, that is my issue with that, is that. That has nothing to do with a sewage system that um has a soil dispersal component.
What, what's, how would you have the city regulate differently if it's a holding tank? I I think that's. We're not exploring anything that needs to be voted on now, we're not wordsmithing anything that needs to be perfect, but what would be different for you? Like, why, why would we treat it differently in your county? Why would we duplicate effort just for a holding tank? When we've said we're not gonna duplicate. For uh leach field.
Yeah, the county approves, if they can, he he's ended the the onsite, if if the county approves it already, and it's not. There's no sewer running to them and whatever, the county's already approved it. But that's, we're not saying they can't, like, we're not regulating that at all. It's all part of an onsite septic, onsite septic system that the county has approved. And we don't regulate that, correct? So we're not, we're not regulating it any differently. We're following what the. County does, and the county's basing their stuff on the state, the state.
So what we're saying is, what you're saying then Ben is, if the county allows them to do that, we don't care. This ordinance doesn't care, right? Is that what I'm hearing? As long as there's no line.
An onsite septic system.
What?
If the county allows them to do an onsite septic system, and we don't require their connection.
And.
Care what kind sort of.
And so they can have a holding tank as well, if they, if that's approved.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, that's all I was trying to go down.
It has to be approved by the county, by state.
Yeah, so that's clear in the ordinance, I mean.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know what we do for, is that a?
That'd be a thumbs down to the change.
Yes, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. So, one, two, yeah, Lucy and I.
Down with the caveat that that's clear, and so obviously there was confusion and it wasn't clear.
But we, yeah, now we understand, yeah.
Okay, uh, the next one is um what I was describing Chuck, this one came from you, questions the legality of um. Uh, regulating whether.
It was more of a question of the wording, to be honest with you, and I'm I'm sitting here rereading it, looking at it goes, except as provided. In this chapter.
And we have to write it.
We already made a provision, so you can put a thumbs down on that one.
One, two. One, two.
If the person that proposed it comes down there.
I was probably blurry eyed by the time I was.
This causes that?
Okay, um, the state requires us to have. This is the case where a septic system fails, and property owner is required to connect to the public system. Uh, that failure is determined by a different agency. The state requires us to have an appeal of that. Um, other agencies requirement, and so there's concern here that that's duplication of efforts, and that's. Um, the city council or the public works director in this case would um. Uh, be duplicating what the uh county is doing related to this. It's required of us to have this appeal process. It's required of us to have this appeal process.
I think, and and my, and my concern on this is. Why, why, why do we have to have an appeal on this? Based upon their recommend, their determination that. You can't have an onsite sewer system.
It's two hundred feet down in a hole, but it's um, the sewer's available to it, and uh, or in their, their framework. It's within two hundred feet of a sewer line, even though it's two hundred feet down cliff through solid rock, their regulations still require the connection. They could come to the city, justify that they shouldn't have to connect based on the factors about.
That confused me because I thought they don't look at that. The county doesn't look at that.
County, um, the WAC regulations have uh two hundred feet.
Alright, okay.
That's separate from our framework that's your proposal. And so two hundred feet is something for them, that if there's public sewer available, or public sewer within two hundred foot of that.
So the home, the trigger to this whole thing is the septic system has failed.
Yeah. This is where you get into the holding tank stuff, because would we allow them then to put in? And we we can clarify this right now, I guess, to put in a holding tank instead of.
As opposed to a pump system that they're gonna have to pump two hundred feet.
Yeah.
It doesn't get into that, it just says, no, you're not gonna make them connect. You figure out how to make that work for them.
Right, and this is just giving this, this gives, we have to have an appeal process, right? Like, we don't, we can't not have an appeal process, because the state says we have to. Be, just because the county told them no, doesn't, we have to have an appeal process, even if our answer is exactly the same. It still has to exist, because the state says it has to exist.
Actually, from a legal standpoint, it's a, it's a different question. DOH or county has decided that your septic, you're, you've repermitted, you've come back and you say, hey, my septic's failed. I'm repermitting. County says, no, you don't need qualifications for it, and then they come over to us and go, hey, we wanna put a holding tank in. And you go back to your statute now, your revised statute, and you determine, will that property qualify to be on septic? If so, then we simply have to adhere to whatever the county said.
Yeah.
Because they made the decision on the failed system. However, if they come to us, and we simply say, you wanna, you know, you want a decision. On whether or not you can fix your failed septic, but we have sewer running right past your house, you would just clearly put up a no.
Yeah.
We have to follow our statute.
Right.
So if it doesn't meet our statute, then they're just back to the county, and the county said.
And I would, and I would think that the health department would say for an onsite sewer system. That definition, according to us, would also include a holding system, so there, so the health department is telling them. You can't replace your existing system with a holding system or. And you're gonna have to connect, that's what I, what I'm taking, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and then whether that line's not adjacent to their property, and then we're gonna make them go a quarter of a mile, that's where I'm thinking, well, we shouldn't.
It's being a fail.
It would be the process, yeah.
Appeal process.
Yeah. Okay.
But all I'm saying is, but if the county, it shouldn't have to go through us, if the, if the county, if legally, Washington State or whoever the county. Allows them to put a holding tank instead.
Well, then, then.
They would never get to us, right? Because the appeal would never get to us. That's why I was getting confused.
Yeah, it's just, this is just a mechanism because it happens.
They have the separate set of standards that determine when somebody has to connect to a sewer system that's available. I believe that one of the factors in that, and there may be other factors, is if that's our system is within two hundred feet. So they're gonna review their regulations and say, that's within two hundred feet, um, so sewer is available to that, you're gonna have to connect. And that property owner says, I don't wanna, they can come to the city. And say, I don't wanna, and the city says, well, you need these uh criteria uh for appeal. If you do meet the criteria, you'll have to connect. If you don't meet the criteria, then um we agree with the county, and any connections required.
Okay.
So we can.
And the appeal process is in there, and it has to be in there anyway, so. Yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, could you streamline this and say that, I mean, is there anything we can do? I'm just curious why they're having to bother us if a holding tank will be allowed. Can we say? Can we just prevent that by saying, hey, if a holding tank will serve your purpose, we don't have a sewer line going right by your house? Yeah, that's fine with us and have that in the ordinance, go ahead and do a holding thing.
Why are we subjected on a holding tank?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, it it's the same as the. Septics is.
I think it's just, it's it's gotta come with an appeal.
Okay, that's just.
I think.
Yes, I think.
I'm done with that. I'm done with.
Michael's perspective would be no change therefore.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Uh, now we're moving out of the um. Septic world and out of scope, um, there's a suggestion. Here that we're somehow duplicating the county's effort when we talk about prohibited discharges. Uh, these are discharges into publicly publicly owned treatment works, and it says nothing to do with septic system. Would suggest not, uh. Just bump down on that one, but Pat, this is your.
Well, I think anything the county's already regulating, if we can get out of regulating it, we should. So we shouldn't have any duplication. So if that's already, if that's decided by the county, and I thought it was, I mean, if they're already in that business. We just follow their rules, they regulate that, and we don't try to duplicate.
This is discharges to the sewer system.
Discharges, this is discharges going into the sewer system.
Mm-hmm.
Like grease traps, those kinds of things.
Yeah, or.
So, okay, what I got confused, because the county doesn't already, the health department and stuff doesn't already require grease traps and all those things?
No.
Okay, so I said.
Okay, yeah, so then, yeah.
No, it's fine.
Yeah.
They don't wanna be in the sewer business.
How come nobody wants to be in the sewer business?
We don't even wanna be.
That's too much money.
And nobody gets it. They don't wanna be in it. I get it.
I will pull up each of these uh individually, just so we go through them all, but broadly, they're all the same. There's many that are related to the level of um fines that are already included in the system, or included as a part of the program.
I think um, the costs and penalties and violations, are they prescribed then? Uh, that was the only other question I had, looking through them, whether this, that they were, whether these had ever been looked at or reevaluated for.
This was adopted, this, these components of the ordinance were adopted in twenty eighteen, because the state required us to update the code that we had in place.
Okay, at that time.
As late as twenty eighteen, which is already seven years ago. Um, they were reviewed. I don't remember what level of thought went into that, whether that was just taking the um model ordinance. Or whether that was um a review.
Seems to do the trick.
Hmm?
They seem to do the trick.
Okay, okay, alright, I just, there were, there were a whole bunch of prescriptive penalties and fines and so forth for.
Local limits like um. Milligrams per liter concentration of fats, oils and greases, chloride, organic solvents, the limits on that. Um, question was, have we looked at that? Um, the suggestion here is that that's out of scope, and if we wanna do that, we should. Undertake that in a different, separate policy effort, different set of stakeholders.
Okay.
So that would be a no.
Yeah, we did change a bunch of he's to the they's um to clean up. And it is good to look at it if you have it on the table.
Seven oh, um, there are fines in there, first violation, second violation, third violation, fourth, and additional. There are fines related to whether your grease trap is working, and again, separate stakeholder group, separate policy discussion, one, two.
Not to say that there's no time to look at those things.
Right.
Civil penalties, ten thousand dollars per day for violation. Is included in um.
Okay, web page three is.
Forty, forty, uh, forty one of forty five.
Which is, yeah, which is page forty five of sixty eight, hold on, if you're on that.
Okay, it's forty, uh, it's forty five of the sixty seven, right?
Or, forty five, yeah.
Again, though, it's outside of the.
Yeah, I think that's.
Different stakeholder group.
Right, I think that's specific for the businesses, yeah. Yeah. Same, in the same boat, on both of those, in mind.
Yeah.
We've got a thumbs down from Michael.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, not, we can never look at those things, because it, but.
Yeah.
But they're also keeping, they're not, we haven't, I mean, the businesses are trying to comply with. The regulations that are in there right now, as far as I know.
Most part.
They, they, they're more or less a term.
For the most part.
Yeah.
Sounds like some doubt.
See, I'd like to say.
It sounds like they'll go crazy.
Yeah, I'd say they all do, but, um, and then we got nine, three, threes, at the same, oh, no, weird.
Ninety three, some criminal, criminal prosecution, but I think it's a penalty of a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's the same.
Right. Yeah, same.
Those are all the same, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now we're expanding outside of what's in this ordinance. Um, to uh SDCs and fee waivers, David suggested waiving SDCs for infill development. That topic doesn't come up in this uh order, this ordinance, or in this chapter, we use the code in thirteen ten, and so it's thirteen oh eight. Suggesting that that's a difference uh policy initiative than this.
And the reason, the reason that I brought that up is there has been concern that um. To have everyone pay into the system, whether you're hooked up to it or not.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And to me, it seems logical that um. There be a stump fee, penalty, whatever you wanna call it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, attached as we are putting lines in. That if you have a vacant property, then the stub is put in for that property. Um, and at that point, um. They start paying a fee, whether it be thirty, forty, or whatever we would decide to go uh per month for that stub fee. Um, and they go, maybe they go five years down the road. And decide that they want to build there. Um, normally, what would happen is they would pay a system development charge to hook in. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong on all this, Ben, but um, the way that I understand it, you'd pay a system development charge. To hook into the system at that point. What I'm suggesting is because you've been paying that thirty dollars a month. For that last five years, we would waive the system development charge. And they would pay for the connection fee for the city to come in if they had to tear up the road, that would. Those costs would be whatever that connection fee costs to cover. The things that we had to do to repair the road and everything, they would pay for all of the connection up to that stub. That's my thought process, and then also um. Uh, if it was an existing development, the existing home, um. They would have the opportunity at that time to hook into the stub um. Themselves, of course, they are still gonna have to pay for decommissioning their system, but they would still. At that time, when the the ditch was open, they would be able to connect in uh with no system development charge. And they would start paying the hundred and forty dollars a month or whatever it was.
Yeah.
That, that is my thought process.
And I like that because that is a carrot.
I don't know how that's different than the system we already have drafted. I don't know how that's different than the system we already have drafted in front of you. Except it requires more administratively to track how much you paid toward this.
That's easy to do. The county. It's accounting, you just keep track of what they paid into it because you got a record of it.
Combined with the first part of what I said is, I don't know how that's different than what's already drafted here.
Well, you mean as as far as system development charge?
Connect now, you get waived if you connect in the future.
He's talking about undeveloped property. Where we're putting, where we have a stub there and at some point in the future, they decide to build on it. That because they've been paying that every month, that they wouldn't have to pay uh uh the development charge, service development charge. And and right now, when we put a line in and go buy the property. They don't pay anything. Until until at such time that they hook in, then they would be required to pay according to the ordinance now. They would require to pay a system development charge in order to hook in. And so what the sub fee does is that provides an incentive for them to know that when they do develop. The system development charges that they're all they have to do is pay for the the city come in, tear up the road. Repair, repair the road and be done with it.
Why would they wanna not charge the system development charge?
What's that?
Why would we wanna not charge in the system?
We wanna get them on the system paying.
It's an incentive, they get out of that, hey, because right now you get nothing from properties as we talked about last time, so it's a new source of revenue. But but then, so you get that little bit all the time, but it's it's just an incentive.
And the system development charge. Is is basically to provide for impact to the system. One residence. Isn't a, isn't an impact to a system like a development going in.
Development doesn't pay a system development charge. Chinatown didn't pay a system development charge.
Pardon?
Chinatown didn't pay a system development charge. Each of the homes.
Yes.
Pays it as they build.
Right.
So what you just said was a big development should pay that system development charge, but that's not how it works.
No, they they pay for that in the price of the home.
Yeah.
When they hook up.
No, they don't. The they.
You just invested twenty million dollars in your system to give waste to the treatment plant and to to treat the waste that goes there. You just invested twenty million dollars in that. When somebody comes into the system, you're asking them to pay back some of that.
Yes, the difference, the difference between spec homes and custom homes. I mean, if if somebody goes in and develops a whole track of homes, they're gonna be paying those fees. They're gonna pay the. Sale of the of the house. Yes. All those holes were custom homes, so they were all individually paying. I don't wanna get away from your discussion, so please, but I do have one question I'd like to come back to at some point. That's that's a kind of a breakdown on the system development charge. How much of that is administrative? How much actually recoups actual costs? In in doing the connection, because because we.
It doesn't take anything to administer.
There there's nothing administrative to it, so it's just all recouping costs of connection. The only reason I'm asking that question is we should be doing everything we can to get people connected, because we're gonna be getting that revenue in perpetuity once they're connected.
Yeah, so it's a carrot. We're talking about the carrots in this stuff.
So, but my question is, if they're talking about undeveloped parcel.
Yeah.
We're here and we're putting a stub in and guess what? You get to pay for it. But what if I don't want that? And what if you put it in the wrong place? What if I don't want that? It's an existing developer, an existing home.
I. Not not, it's, this is building on what Scott's saying, the stub fee. Calling it the fee is an issue. We already discovered, discovered the um ports of the state have overturned that. And this case and another case and another case, we provided that analysis for you. Um so it can't be a fee um just that applies to all lots uh as if it were a tax. The, that's the reason why we've changed it to a fine. And that's also the reason why we limited it down from a fine applicable to vacant land. And only to developed land, because you can't require, we have no requirement for vacant land to connect a sewer.
Right, there isn't a septic system.
There's no.
There's nothing.
There's no, and so what your, what your suggestion suggesting just puts us back into what Soap Lake um had tried to do.
Okay, I get it. I'm with you.
So Ben. The trench is open, the sewer is going down the line, it's gonna go right past an empty lot. Homeowner says, hey man, or property owner, I sure would like the opportunity to do this now.
Oh, we always put it, we'll always put a stub in.
Okay, this is a good charge. But there will be SDC charge.
Well, I think, tell me, Dave, if this gets to what you're saying.
Um to to answer Scott's question, so when we plan a project, when we get into design. We intend to send a letter notifying them the upcoming project. Now's the time to determine where that cleanout might be. We've got some engineers, they know what direction sewer runs.
Yeah.
And so they they will put it in a logical spot, but there's a a an engagement process with the homeowner to make sure that that's a logical spot. For them, they have that option. Um two years after the project has been identified, um the year before construction. Uh a year before, two years before, they get the notice saying, hey, it's really ready to clean out, it's available, choose whether to connect and so.
So now there's a stub out, but there's still no, no home.
No development.
And no revenue, none of.
Okay, so so the question then becomes. Do we have the opportunity at that point to encourage that? By having a um. Stub fee as opposed to um system development charge later on down the road.
I think this, this do the same thing, Dave. What if you said to that person, hey, we're going right by your line, if you wanna start paying a fee now, optional, you don't have to, you start paying a fee now when you hook up. Uh um then uh that'll cover your system development fee, because it's a carrot to get them to hook up quickly. You, uh somebody bought it, what did they hook up with in a year? Well, then you get a house quicker in a year. If they wanna wait ten years, well, then we get their thirty, forty dollars a month for ten years. So we don't require anything, we just offer it to them. Say this could save you a lot of money, because you don't know what the system development fees are gonna be when you hook up. If you wanna start paying that fee now, then you're covered. That could be, get at what you're saying and not be a legal requirement. So just an idea.
That'd be an administrative.
Put your money aside when you're ready to build.
Build your own. System, the the system as drafted is that there's a requirement to connect, there's a notification and then you make a choice.
But not for develop, not for, it's a no house on it.
Not, yeah.
Okay, so if I'm, you know, just leave that the same on vacant land, fine.
So we've been beaten pretty hard on.
Yeah, we've just lost the the script on this, and so I wanna complete this and see if there's anything we need to circle back to because.
Alright.
So um suggestion is to um not not further consider a stub fee model and to go for.
For land, we're talking about.
So.
Then once it gets available, then we turn.
On a couple of those orange ones you got up there.
Yeah, well, we skipped over one and we got stubs, so this was a waiver for uh SDC waiver for any infill development, which. Related to the stub and we cleared that one.
Right.
But this is just anybody who builds where there's a sewer line uh in front of them, gets their SDC waived. I think that's responsible, but.
Right, I, well, I think that you're.
We can do that, can we?
No. We can't. Cause then it's a gift of. Yeah, so that's a. Can't one, yeah, I don't.
Okay, I'm not, restate the question because I'm getting confused again.
Undeveloped land.
We already covered undeveloped land, right?
This is a waiver for infill, which is undeveloped land right now.
Undeveloped land, they run this sewer line by.
New development, public sewer is available, waive SDCs to encourage infill. Is the suggestion.
Yep.
Well, this actually. Citizens.
Right, this came.
Is a very bad slope.
Yeah.
Well, and it came up.
You're gonna treat somebody differently and treat somebody else, that's arbitrary capricious.
Yeah, I I I agree. If we had a uniform thing on system development fees, I am concerned about the penalties and the system development fees. Overall, but.
Alright, so circling back up to the top, are we in for that, or do we wanna have staff take a swing at wordsmithing and bring you?
We've got a couple of oranges there that are just real easy to solve.
Do it.
Let's do it.
Financial hardship there at five percent, the only question we had was calculating market value. So. Why not just use the assessed value? Assessed value. Because that's already a given, um and assessed valued is market driven. When they, when they do, when they, when they do.
Hold on, I think that, I think what they're saying though is if we, if they use, because. You know, they they increased my property value by X percent or whatever, and my taxes went up a little bit. Um and that may not be, I mean, I could probably, if that may not be market value, but that is. My assessed value by the county, and so that would be standard for everybody, we would know what that is, and then five percent of that.
Yeah.
Like, I I feel like that.
As opposed to.
Fair in that it's, it's consistent across what we, what you pay taxes on, five percent of what you pay taxes on. You know, your assessed value.
Is assessed value structures and.
Yes, yep, correct. So I, I mean, I feel like that, it it's, that at least takes it out of the person can find their friend who's an assessor, who can. Yeah, but then you don't have. You don't have to go do any of that, you just go. County assist. County assess. Whatever, like, I I think that. Uh I know only one person.
I agree.
But.
I agree with that.
It just makes it.
Can go look and it, that is what it is.
Right, they just, they can find it out without. Right now.
In in theory, it might. It might knock the threshold down a little.
It'll actually knock it down a little bit, probably.
But not that much.
And then.
So is that not orange? So that, is that green now instead of orange?
Yeah, that green.
And then I, oh. I was probably removed, right now we've got those five percent of this or five percent of this.
Five percent.
This is five percent of the land, and this is five percent of the buildings and the land.
Yeah.
I'll scratch the land one.
Just make it five percent right up.
Okay.
Put that green thing to use.
Of the property. Assess value of the property.
I think we know that, everything.
So that'll be the the difference there. Alright, and then um. Well, this one, you want to reduce Cody's burden when he reviews a septic and he wants to clarify that there's not um. An additional burden, I don't think that either one of these statements um does that. Because they both say that Cody was not involved at all, and we've already said that Cody's making a decision about.
Our, our requirements.
Yeah.
So different, maybe. Different or less wording in that section.
We're talking about the one on page fifteen?
Yeah.
The last one there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't see any reason to change that. Because our. Cause our paragraph is about our basically the building permit.
Our permitting process.
But it doesn't really have anything to do with the county, health department either way.
Yeah. So that's good, that. I'm done with, which will be happening.
We've got two that are stating their vote again as a.
Yeah.
So the third now has done change.
Wow, you guys. Nice work.
Have we gotten into the? Penalty, I mean, the amounts and stuff that we got in.
It's not in this ordinance, the only part that's in this ordinance is sets the upper and lower bounds, um the upper bound.
Yeah, I saw that and I guess.
Lower bound being um. Uh excluding O and M, and so that next discussion is. Uh the um. Fee or fee schedule, fine schedule, uh and so within that, but it's not within this ordinance.
That's in its own, the fee schedule fine schedule, we look inside that and go, what's the penalty, what is the?
But in here, we have the range, I mean, I saw that, that's where I get, wondering, because we did originally. I mean, we had the hundred, the penalty was one forty, and then we debated that last. Yeah, and so you're saying that in a change of that, we're just gonna have to put a range in here.
The range is already in there.
Yeah, I know, but what we could do is that, well, we could set that as part of the ordinance before it was, I'm just trying to say is then that. That leads it to where the citizens don't know what we're doing. Right, this, we've gone to all this work, are we just sidestepping that question, is what I'm wondering, by not dealing with it now?
Could you, could they set a number and then on Wednesday vote it, vote on it? As a change to their fee schedule?
I think Wednesday's. Is there a reason we need to vote on this on Wednesday? A little soon, because that puts a lot of pressure on the staff, then we gotta go over this all by then. Well, there's not anything magical gonna happen the next month if we.
So for, from the staff perspective, the redrafting has already been done and you already reviewed all the redrafting, it's just making that real.
The part that I think would be missing if we wrote on it Wednesday. Yeah, I think we, I feel better if, because we're not hurting anything by voting.
What, what, so the staff is the one that's responsible for organizing the next public comments, so what, what are you hoping to achieve?
Well, the only thing, you wanna make sure that the public has an opportunity to read a completely revised version of this before the, whatever meeting we decide to vote on it.
And the teasing out the meaningful um questions from the public. Is that an expectation that you have of staff, or just put it on as a hearing and let whatever questions come up or?
No question.
Yeah, right, comments, we're we're beyond the point where it's um fact finding as far as questions, it's comments about this should be different. Uh this should be different, you shouldn't do this at all, go away.
Since you're worried that that would come up, and I I I don't know, but.
That that would come up, I'm trying to establish clear expectations.
I just think it's good public policy, when we finally got a complete ordinance, we put that on, say, hey, this, we're, we're, we've done a lot of homework on this. This is our finished product, we're gonna be voting on that, and here's where we're gonna be voting on, and that they have a chance to see it. And the reason, I think, and I, that I'm advocating for that, I know, I think there's more than, one is. I know how hard I've had, difficult time I have of digesting this and understanding it. So I just think having a completed ordinance in front of the public to where it isn't just rushed. Is just a fair process, because.
And I would think, I understand. I understand what you're saying, and it would probably not gonna have anything substantively changed by, based upon any kind of public input at this point, except. What you don't wanna do is create a situation where the public is of the opinion that we push this through. Without their opportunity of providing some input.
What is it that you need of staff to make it?
Nothing's gonna change probably from council's perspective at this point. I I think we just. Have an obligation to the public to be transparent and give them the opportunity to kind of digest it before we actually vote on it. And if they wanna make any comment, they can. They wanna make any comments. And then at that point, then we take into consideration the comments that have been made. That may affect how we vote.
Agenda at all then. Does it need to be on the agenda at all?
I don't think so. I, my preference would be that it not be. Does not. I, and because, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't be ready to vote on it, because I just wanna see a complete draft, and I'm not trying to be obstru- obstructionistic. And the only other thing I'd be advocating for is I, I think the penalty thing, I understand we got the range, but that's, I'd like to see us drill down on that too before we. Were done with this at some point, on, because I think we could ease a lot of fears and tensions. If we came up, we had an agreement, if we came up as a council now, with the penalties would be this, fine, it can go up with inflation. Cause there's a fear factor out there, God, it could be this high amount, by just, by us debating that, and yet, if we get that penalty down to something. I think the public would accept it a lot more. Right now, it's a fear factor of what we could do to them.
So what you want um to go with the discussion is the discussion, the the fine amount discussion, the ordinance with that. So that's what you want, in order to be able to put it, trouble the public to make decisions, or anything else, um that's necessary from anybody?
I can't think of anything.
I hope not, you guys put a lot of work into this, I can't imagine that there'd be anything.
I hope not, you guys put a lot of work into this, I can't imagine that there'd be anything.
I think it's just a matter of presenting a final document to the public so that they're aware of what we are proposing. That the ordinance.
I think that that's.
I think we're.
It's generally that, but if, if you've got people who are already committed to adopting it without that, then that's just a platitude that's only made for.
Anyway, it might seem like a platitude, but it. It might, might gain you some good public will too. Yeah, I, I think it would.
I have like three greens for taking a month.
Yeah.
I'm making N from the upper that. That fixed amount of the B.
We need to, I think the only we need to agree is, as a, as a council, is that we don't need to make any. Changes, any more substantive changes at this point. Other than what Michael just mentioned, where he compounded what I said. Yeah, we just need to get it.
And that was mine, one of my main things was when I was talking to Wes about this too was.
Yeah, so to nail that down, so we got a little more work to do ahead of us, but.
Like what?
Do you want to do the next step or do you want to exclude O N?
I want to exclude O N.
It sounds like everybody wants to exclude O N, so that's, these get to be proposed at the same time.
Yeah.
In July.
And so that, by saying that, Pat, specific, you're not asking for further information on all the stuff that you spent your common period, common time in this. Asking for, you only want these two things and then it's ready for explicitly.
Okay, what I'm going to say is, it helps me when I see all the changes we made written, now you're asking me, Pat, you cannot make any more comments. I'm not going to commit to that, but I'm not here to be opportunistic, I'm here like everybody else to get something passed. So, but I reserve the right to ask questions as we go, okay?
What's the expectation of staff from the city council?
With this and then the, we all agree that the fee, I, as far as I, the thumbs up, I, I think we all agree that the fee should, uh, exclude. The O N M, correct? So it would be the low range, the low end, not the high end, like.
We're going, we're going to give a couple of options.
Okay, you can do that, yeah, give it, oh, and you, you were talking about, and Wes was mentioning, you know, administrator, just cutting the checks and processing it, you know, or me.
When is that discussion?
So.
Time, it has to, the vote on that has to be after this because you can't.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we made good progress.
The expectation explicitly from the city council as a whole is the fee amount. The updated, um, draft based on tonight's discussion and that's all from the council as a whole, is that what you're expecting?
Yeah.
Five greens.
And I want to say, I appreciate the, this last draft, things were a lot clearer and I know a lot of work went into that. I want to thank you, Ben, who worked on it for that, so, because I could tell there was a lot of work going into it, I appreciate that. Thank you for allowing us to do that, I know it's kind of an aggravation for people that already have an idea what should be.
You're going to have no reason to come to council meetings anymore.
Uh, maybe you're an eight eleven.
Uh, signing chief for those of us who were, everybody was here.